Good morning, this is the Ways and Means Committee. We are here to hear twenty-four-das-zero-five-two-one ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. I am Isaac Getze Schleifer, acting chair of the committee. To my right is Councilman Z. Cohn. And soon to be, to my left, is Councilwoman Ramos. Today, we are here for the inspector general, and so if you can please state your name, introduce your team, and then go into your presentation. Thank you.
My name is Isabel Mercedes-Coming. I am the inspector general of Baltimore City. I did bring my team with me, and I will go through everybody. It's actually in my speech, so may I proceed? Okay. Good morning, Chairman Schleifer, honorable committee, and esteemed guest. The Office of the Inspector General, the OIG, stands firm in its commitment in investigating allegations of fraud, waste, and abuse perpetrated by employees and elected officials or contractors for the city of Baltimore. This includes violations of criminal law, civil statutes, regulations, ethical laws, or standards of contact. The OIG then provides comprehensive factual reports to the agency heads or the citizens when I am allowed to by law. I am joined today by, with my deputy, Matt Neal, the Assistant ID of Administration, Ivan Guionis, Ethics Director, Christopher Amberger. I am also here with two esteemed members of the OIG Advisory Board. The chairman, Gail Guilford, a former Linsky Award recipient, and the accomplished CPA and attorney, Jim Godey. Now, highlights for fiscal year twenty-four include numerous investigative reports the OIG completed, which included DPW, a seven million dollar outstanding water bill for the housing authority, finance, including a one-point-three million dollars in uncollected right-of-way permits, Department of Transportation, a million-dollar retainerage payment that was outstanding for years to city contractors, ARPA, one-hundred-and-thirty thousand of nonprofit mismanagement of ARPA funds, employee retirement fund, a five-point-one million-dollar finding where five-hundred-and-thirty-five Baltimore City school workers were not signed up for retirement and were unaware of that status, and other agencies, including both the Baltimore City Police and Fire Department. Now, most of these reports and management alerts can be found on the website. In ethics, the achievements include establishing an accelerated process for the gift waiver applications in conjunction with the Office of Emergency Management, where our ethics director himself was available for his first contact twenty-four-seven, putting this process to the test during the Key Bridge collapse, when our ethics board convened and granted various emergency waiver applications within less than a twenty-four-hour turnaround. They also have advised numerous of elected officials and city employees on their ethics-related concerns, managing the annual financial disclosure process for over three thousand employees, of which we have received two-thousand-nine-hundred individual disclosures, with three thousand more outstanding, and we will be going after those, investigating twenty-eight ethics complaints, and keeping track of a hundred-and-four lobbyist registrations, and the associated by-annual reporting with that, as well as answering over a thousand related help desk recipients for just this year. Now, the OIG currently has various performance measures. The first is effectiveness, which is the number of criminal, civil, or administrative actions taken place. For fiscal year twenty-three, the OIG completed a hundred-and-eight actionable items with a goal of a hundred. For fiscal year twenty-four, we have already completed a hundred-and-twenty-seven, with four weeks left in the fiscal year. The next metric is outcome, which is known as the identified savings, waste, or savings or waste. Now, this is the amount of money wasted or saved as a result of OIG investigations. And during each of the OIG investigations, any financial issues that have been identified can either fall into the category of waste or savings. So this metric is contingent on cases the OIG receives. For fiscal year twenty-three, we identified six-point-nine million dollars of monies that fell into the category. It was as a result of the investigations. For fiscal year twenty-four, the OIG has identified sixteen million, one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, the OIG hopes at identifying waste and savings and encourages better fiscal management through new legislation or updated policies and procedures. Although the OIG has been very successful in this metric in recent years, this should not be considered the most important, because this is demonstrated by the fact that the ethics investigations may not have dollar amounts of value, but the value of effective ethical program and ethical workers is immeasurable, as that is the basis of good government. And for this year, as every one of the six years that I have served as the inspector general of Baltimore City, the OIG team has met and surpassed its target of identified savings and waste. To put it in perspective, the first year I started, it was two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars of savings and waste, and this year I present to you sixteen million. Next, the output metric, or the number of outreach activities, the OIG is committed to increasing awareness as to who we are and what we do. Awareness greatly, greatly impacts the number of complaints which the OIG furthers, and we do so by maintaining an active social media presence on X, also known as Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, as well as numerous outreach opportunities with all local news media, both television and radio, in-town halls. In addition, the OIG, myself, the inspector general, greets new employees virtually every month at the New Employee Orientation, setting a foundation to work with integrity and ethics. Most important, I stress, if there's any whistleblower complaints, if there's any UC, fraud, waste, or abuse, please report it. Now, last year, Councilman Burnett asked the OIG to include hotline numbers in our statistics. So the OIG strives to reach seven-hundred complaints as a goal. Again, when I first started, that number was seventy. For two thousand and twenty-four, we are already at seven-hundred-and-sixty complaints with a full month left. Now, the complaints are from citizens, employees, confidential informant, and other government agencies, and this is the backbone of our agency. But it is a budget that we are here to discuss. So the OIG budget is ninety-four percent dedicated to salaries and personnel costs, with the OIG holding eighteen funded positions. Now, the OIG does have a current single vacancy, but we will be interviewing for that next week. The challenge of the OIG is to be able to address all investigations in a timely manner with qualified investigators. Each of my agents carry between two and four active cases. The office has over thirty active investigations, and I hate to report, but we have a pending list of ten important cases. For the third year in a row, the OIG is committed to saving money for the cities by utilizing our own employees for all our outreach programs, such as our annual report, the ethics annual report, as well as our videos and presentations. Now, as an update on last year's one-time enhancement request for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the software for the financial disclosures, Todd Carter of Besit, which is our IT, came forward after our last hearing, and he offered to cover the cost of this ethics enhancement for all the elected officials and all the thousands of city workers. Now, this process is still underway, and we are hopeful that the company, a company will be selected in the next month. Grateful to the leadership for investing in this important initiative of upholding ethical standards and facilitating a more streamlined, transparent process for all employees involved, because as every one of us has tried to do our financial disclosures, we are well aware it is a cumbersome and burdensome process, and the transparency of that to our citizens is crucial. So the impact of this allocation will extend far beyond convenience, but positively influencing the overall integrity of our city government. OIG continues to be one of the few offices in government where the citizens have an excellent return on investment, with an overall budget of two-point-six million, and able to identify over sixteen million. I thank you, as always, for your continued support of the OIG as we continue to be the citizens' watchdog. Transparency, accountability, and ethics are the pillars of good government, and we hope this honorable body will join our citizens, citizen-based advisory board, in supporting the increase of our budget.
Thank you very much, Inspector General. Thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of the citizens, and thank you to your team for their responsiveness. I know when we call with questions or anything like that, they're extremely responsive. Maybe if we can spread that around to some of the other agencies also, that'd be helpful, but thank you for what your team does. First question, I'll turn it over to Councilman Cohn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Inspector General. Do want to, again, appreciate the professionalism by which your office operates, and particularly want to thank Mr. Chris Amberger over here, who, you know, I think ethical conduct among elected officials is critically important in whether communities, whether people feel trust that their government is working for them. And we're seeing at the national level how it plays out when folks do not have trust in the people they put into office. And so I think having someone who is clear and concise and responsive like Chris is extremely important. One of the things I'm thinking about, particularly for the next council, is really establishing a relationship with your office where folks are pretty consistently checking in and just making sure that anything that they need to do, or anything that they're thinking about, that there is an open door, that there feels, there's a two-way relationship so that we can make sure everything that the city council does is above board, and that there's just a certainty around that. So just wanted to say to you that, as I hope to transition into my next role, really hope there are opportunities to strengthen the relationship with the Ethics Department so that there's just clarity, there's open and transparent conversation, there's, you know, anytime, anything is even remotely controversial, I know for me, I will ask, and Chris knows, he's on speed dial in my office, because I think it's important, and I think we should all play by the same set of rules and understand the rules of the game. And so I wanted to just ask you, one, as we think about particularly new members coming into the city council, making sure that there is robust training and understanding for them in the role that the Ethics Department plays in not just, you know, helping them to understand the rules, but then as they go, as they navigate the terrain, that you all are there, and for all of us, for my colleagues, for myself as well, hoping to have conversation the next term, have training, have ongoing communication, where it just feels like we're all consistently on the same page. Wanted to see if you had any response to that in just thinking about, you know, creating just even a higher level of trust in our elected officials in the city of Baltimore.
Thank you for that comment. End question. We pledge that we will be meeting with, and I have always met a one-on-one with every new elected official in my time. I have, I have, there's only been one elected official who I did not meet with, but other than that, I've met with every single elected official, sat down, and with the new leadership, if you could just stress to them how important that is. And then, in addition, the Ethics Director actually has a two-hour training program that we do with the new electeds, so that they will understand all the nuances that it takes to be an ethical elected official here in Baltimore City, and how important those financial disclosure documents are, because they are read. They are read by the citizens, they are read by the media, and it's very important that they are done correctly. And so that, we, we know is an important aspect of your jobs, and we have always had an open-door policy, and we are, every, every one of you sitting here has worked with my office in trying to make it a better Baltimore, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Could we extend that opportunity for even the returning members? I always just think there's, it's good to do a refresher course, right? I mean, some of the ethics code is, you know, it, it, I, I don't think too many folks go to bed reading it each night, and so I think it's easy to just not remember certain sections and, you know, how to do a waiver for certain things, and when do I need to do a waiver? Again, I know these are questions that I ask pretty regularly of, of Mr. Amberger, but I would love for myself and for my returning colleagues as well to participate in that training. I just think it's good practice for us to generally be doing these refreshers.
I think that's a great idea. I think that we'll be happy to come down to this area where, where you all can sit, and we'll actually give a presentation here and actually, you know, because there are so many different aspects once you become an elected official, so many different nuances, whether you can accept a gift, whether it should be a lobbyist, who's controlled donors, all of these things.
Yeah.
And a misstep can end up impacting your entire future. So we would be happy to do such.
That would be great, and I think-
If you could, if that can be scheduled probably like in January, I think that's a, a great idea.
Yeah, no, I, I would really appreciate that, and I think, again, one of the things I want to just lift up about you that I have appreciated is that you are publicly communicative, and, you know, I think are savvy about social media and media, and I do think it is extremely important for the public to understand, again, the rules of the game and the dynamics, and just how important it is for folks in these jobs to maintain ethical standards. And so I appreciate the level of public discourse that I think your office has been able to have consistently, and hope that that will continue under your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you. So my, my first question, and I don't know if there's anything scientific to this, but why is the target, you know, your target's at two million this year? Obviously, we wish it was at zero, but that's not the reality. So is there a reason, like, two million's the target for next year as opposed to, like, this past year, you did sixteen million in savings?
Oh, because it's completely arbitrary, to be very honest, and I mean, our savings is completely arbitrary. It's dependent on which cases come in. Some cases have a tremendous dollar impact, okay? And, you know, one, one case this time was over five million. But other cases may have no dollar impact, but yet they're tremendous impact to our city. So I didn't want to set that too high, because, I mean, some years we're at just over a million. I didn't want that to be the focus, because what has to be the focus is making Baltimore better. And sometimes, it's, it's not in that we saved all this money, it's that we changed a policy. It's that we changed the overtime policy for the police department. It's what, you know, whether we, an ethics situation that ended up being litigated. I mean, you don't know what it's going to be, so I don't want a number being how successful this office is. This office is so much more than that. This is office is what the citizens find to be important, and that may not have anything to do with the dollar amount. It might be changing something that has been done incorrectly for years.
Gotcha.
So that's why.
So is there, is there any other metrics that you have in mind that perhaps, like, in, in future years, we should switch it up? I know we do that across some agencies. Change what the measures, you know, the, you know, what measures, like what we're, we're looking at? So is it important for that to stay there, or is there other things that would be more impactful?
I think, I think everything comes down to, in the reality of the world, everything comes down to the bottom line. So I do think it's an important number, I do. But I don't think, I never want it to be unattainable. It is, what's most important to me, and has always been since I started, is the public's interaction with my office, and that the public has a positive interaction, that we are responsive, that we tell them, if we can't help them, we tell them where to go. Last year, our number was very high. It was almost a thousand, and that's because over three hundred cases had to do with the food stamp cards. And we got so many complaints, but we were telling people the right place to go, and it was a result of working with, that, the law was actually changed. So now the citizens, when their, their card, their card is compromised, before, they would not have any money for food, and that took a, a whole month to get fixed. But now the law's changed so that if their card is compromised, they can actually get their money right away, because we had that many people impacted. So even though that wasn't something that we couldn't do, we reached out and we let them know that this was such a huge problem. So that, that one is the most important to me. And seven-hundred is a big number, because, like I said, when I started, it was seventy, and then the first year was a hundred-and-fifty, the third year was three-fifty, and since that, every year, we've, we've hit seven, seven-hundred. So that's, that number, knowing that the public cares and the public knows where to turn to, that's the one that matters the most to me.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to echo my colleague sentiments. You and your team have always done a great job, and I really appreciate it. I learn a lot by reading the reports as well, and also would certainly welcome a refresher on the ethics. I think we all need one. We should, that should just be a requirement, just to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So I appreciate my colleague asking for that as well. But I just wanted, they asked my, the same questions that I had, so thank you very much for all you're doing, and keep it up. Let us know how we can be helpful.
Well, we could always use another, another employee, because it very much bothers me that we have ten, ten pending investigations, and these are not small investigations, and the impact money as well. So I know that my colleague, Ivan Bates, asked for twenty employees. Well, the Office of the Inspector General would just be looking for one additional pin so that we can actually not have a pending investigations, because timeliness is so critical in these investigations, and every investigation is different. Sometimes we have to pull the entire team together, and just having more investigators would, would make the office even more effective.
I do remember one hearing a couple of years ago where you said a, a full office would be twenty-five, correct?
You have a great memory. I did say that. It's still true.
Still true, but you're, you'd be happy with one, one more.
Yeah, I, I, I know that we're in budget, and so I'm, I'm being absolutely realistic in what I request from this board, so.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Anything else? All right, you got one? All right, Cohn?
Thanks, Chair. I actually have a question. A couple of years back, passed the law the Transparency in Lobbying Act, which sort of codifies some of the disclosure requirements for lobbyists. Was curious about just sort of a status update on that. I know you mentioned that you maintain the list of lobbyists and keep it fresh. You know, that's one of those areas where I, I remember when we were passing the law, there's just some gray in terms of like, you know, who is a lobbyist, what constitutes lobbying activity, what is advocacy versus, you know, lobbying? And, and did just want to hear from your perspective, you know, how that part of the workflow is going, whether those are active conversations? Because again, I think in the same way that it's incredibly important for the public to trust the ethical conduct of elected officials, it's also really important for them to not perceive that backdoor deals are being cut within, in the dead of the night, that, you know, people are misrepresenting their interests when they come to City Hall, that, you know, again, not, I, I never want to take an anti-lobbiest posture, because I think it's an important part of the political ecosystem, but it's important that people disclose. It's important that people are clear about who they're lobbying for and what their, who their clients are, and when there's conflicts, that those are disclosed. And so was curious about that part of the work, because I think it gets, gets less public attention than like some of the scandals that we sometimes see. So was interested in that.
It's, that's also is very true, and you know, that's very important to get our controlled donor list.
Yeah.
Which, of course, becomes incredibly important for all the electeds. I'm actually going to let Chris Amberger answer this, because he's the Ethics Director, and he should speak.
Thank you very much. May it please the committee.
Hey, Chris, if you don't mind, we just gotta, you can come up here if you'd like, if you want to stand, but.
Thank you again. Good question about the lobbyist registration. The lobbyist registration system is part of the financial disclosure system that we're trying to optimize and streamline with new software, much like in the case of the financial disclosures of the elected officials and public officials in general. The Ethics Board is, to a certain degree, reactive. So we are following up on previous years lobbyist registrations to see if the same organizations are still registered, are still registering. Occasionally, we get a complaint by the public that points out that a certain organization is acting as an unregistered lobbyist. That, of course, requires some analysis that involves also the lobbyist to see, because the, the definition of lobbyist is tied to certain amounts of money and compensation expended on gifts, expended on the actual lobbyist, and so it always requires a little bit of background check and the invitation, the strong invitation by the ethics staff to the lobbyist to update or, or register anew in that system. So one of the ideas that has been going around and would be, for example, if a committee here plans to invite a lobbyist or a, an advocate, sometimes the definition between advocate and lobbyist is very technical to just let us know who's coming. We also would like to have a maybe paper registration form ready here at the, at the council for anyone who takes the stage and makes, tries to make their point, to be able to just fill in and have it sent upstairs so we can process that. Also, the, one of the benefits of the new software is going to be a, which is, of course, standard in many other government softwares, the opportunity to have automatic renewal notices generated. So it is not the manual process that we're going through now, where we have to, you know, go through the, through the registrations, isolate the email addresses, then send individual emails by hand to the respective lobbyists. So there, there is certainly room on the, on the upside to improve, but we are open for any suggestion, any perceived need that you may see that may escape us from our, you know, daily routine. Remember, this, there's a hundred-and-four lobbyists and three thousand plus, three thousand-two-hundred public employees have to be sometimes hunted down for several months to fill in their financial disclosures. And so lobbying is, the lobbying section is due for a review, and I have actually looked at this for the summer that we're going through and comparing the last three years since the last audit that Ethics did prior to my tenure, and we hope to have the system up and running hopefully by the end of the year, and report back to you next year with positive or even better news.
No, I appreciate that, and yeah, you know, I do, I do wonder, maybe it's like more reporting, or, you know, I just, it's one of these things where, you know, I will forget to check the list, and, you know, I think, again, when, when, when you're, you know, when you're an elected official and you're talking to someone, there, there is some gray in terms of, are we talking in our elected- in terms of, are we talking in our elected official-to-lobbyist capacity? Are we just having conversation? And I think the more just public and just, the, the more discourse, the more communication we can have about, about that list and about the activities that folks are taking, I, I just think it's all good for sort of the health of our civic sector and the, the public well-being and how, how we as elected, but more importantly, how our communities are informed about the deal-making that happens, you know, in, in the public sector.
And part of that is also, you know, the definition of lobbyist depends on the gift money expended in certain cases.
Sure.
If there are gifts to individual offices, in to individual electeds, to individual public officials, those have to be reported on the previous calendar year's disclosures, and that is really the only thing that provides the nexus that goes back to our registration, which is publicly accessible. And so, the more complete the disclosures and the more complete the communication between Ethics and the council or individual offices is, the better it is for the public and the, the more transparent the business of the city can be conducted.
Appreciate that. Thank, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Chris, if you don't mind, if you can just give us like a high-level difference between an advocate versus a lobbyist, like where's that, where's that line drawn?
So, it, the Ethics Law has to take into consideration that lobbying and advocacy are protected, protected political speech. So, we cannot restrict, we can only make public the identities of the people who are lobbying, and it depends on, and I, I should have the numbers right in my head, but I believe the number of, the monetary amount of gifts expended is, I believe, around $100 a year that qualifies an, a lobbyist, but I will double-check that for the record. And also, a, I believe it is about $5,000 a year in compensation by an organization to a lobbyist that would qualify that lobbyist as having the obligation to, to be registered with the city.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, so there's, I mean, there's a group that oftentimes the way that they advocate, so they are lobbyists, but the way that they advocate is they send individual members or employees of their organization to reach out directly to their councilperson. And when they reach out, it looks like it's coming from a constituent, and you interact accordingly, and then it's not until later on you find out, wait, that person is actually on salary from this group with a coordinated message, and it's coming that way. So, when you say gifts, I, you said $100,000 gifts, the $5,000, I understand if that person's being paid. So, does that mean any volunteer of the organization is not considered a lobbyist?
Well, the organization itself would be considered a lobbyist and would have to register as a lobbyist with the system. So, for many organizations, we not only have the organization registered, but also the actual lobbyist. In some cases, it's a law office that, you know, specializes in that activity. It is, the, the, the law is not as granular as to distinguish between the, to, to have a clear distinction between the grassroots lobbyist and the volunteer to a, an organization, and that is in part what we get occasionally Ethics complaints about, where we have to actually, on a, on a case-by-case basis, check the facts. Is that person who has been the target of a complaint, is that person indeed a lobbyist under the law? And sometimes, it may be the case, and in other cases, the facts just do not add up to satisfy the legal requirements of the definition.
So, if somebody's a board member or a member of a committee of an organization, that they themselves are not being personally compensated, but there are employees of that entity that are registered lobbyists, are being paid, are those volunteers also subjected to, like, are they supposed to disclose that they're with that organization and that they are technically lobbyists or lobbying on behalf of lobbyists?
Again, the, the board, Ethics depends on the self-identification of those lobbyists, because in the case of citizens who are volunteering their services to a specific interest group, again, the, the, there is a, a very clear line between their political speech and lobbying, and sometimes it is, you know, they may be speaking on behalf of that organization, or be, be that formally or informally, and are not compensated against, for that activity, then depending on the facts, they may not be lobbyists under the law because they're not compensated. However, the organization that they are representing should be registering as a lobbyist every year or at least within five days after engaging in lobbying activity.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Ramos, you got anything? You good?
I do have one thing I completely forgot, but Chris helped me remember. The one thing we would like to do, and I believe my advisory board has sent a letter about it, they did last year, is separating the OIG's, the service numbers, so that the OIG has a service number and that Ethics has a service number, all under the umbrella of the Office of Inspector General. So, we tried to put that through this past year, but apparently, no service numbers were given, no changes in that was allowed. So, we are hopeful for the next fiscal year that we will be able to separate the two divisions, because as you all are aware, the Ethics Department is a very important part of, and right now, my OIG agents are the investigators for the Ethics Department.
So, I can just jump in on that. That was a, this, as you all know, this was the first year that we built the budget using the modules in Workday, and there were issues running into creating new accounts and how that interacted with the li, the current year data versus the planning year data. So, it was just a growing pain of working in a very new, complicated, integrated system, and we ask for all of, we ask for patience from all of our partner agencies as we get used to our new systems.
Okay. I just, it was brought up last year, so I wanted to make sure the board knew.
That sounds good. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you to the board members for taking time to come out today. The committee is now in recess until 1:00 PM, where we will be hearing DOT. Thank you.
Thank you.